Ten thirty AM, tenth of February twenty twenty five. I've just checked the time and I'm going by Apple time. We have a variety of different clocks in this building, so I always rely on Apple. Um, prior to the meeting commencing, we've had the fire alarm tested for the building. So if you hear a fire alarm going during the meeting, please exit the building to the rear of me and congregate in the car park to the front where we'll hopefully take into account anybody that's within the building. Um, I think, you've heard me say this so many times, all the members are trained and are able to carry out the duties that are in front of them this morning. Um, so simply, I'm going to move on with the agenda. We've got a fairly weighty agenda this morning. Um, we've got quite a few people in the meeting room, so I'm very pleased it's a popular meeting. We'll see how we go. Item one is apologies replacement members.
Good morning Chairman, we've received apologies from councillors Ian Carrington, Mansour Hassan and Robert Reed, no replacements, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item two decorations of members' interests. Uh, members can declare now at any point in the meeting if something comes up. councillor Smith.
Thank you Chairman, with respect to item two, application number one four seven seven three six, uh, I'm the local member, uh, as it's within my division. I have had an email on this Chairman, it was purely, uh, if comments from the Bigby Parish Council were in the report and had they been answered, which I replied to as a point of faction information, but I have not predetermined, I have not spoken to anybody else on it in any other capacity Chairman, so I'm able to vote as a member of this committee.
Thank you, anybody else? councillor Skinner.
Thank you Chairman, uh, item seven point one, it is in my division.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so I'll therefore move you on rapidly to item three. Uh, minutes of the previous meeting held on the thirteenth of January, these have been circulated already, so you've all had an opportunity to read them. Uh, I'm going to propose them from the chair, do I have a second or anywhere? Thank you councillor Smith. Uh, and I will assume that everybody is in favour. Uh, that's excellent. If you're not in favour, please indicate now. Okay, so I'll sign those in a moment. Uh, move you on to item four then, which is notes for the site visit, thirty first of January. Again, these are here for noting, so I'm quite happy that they form the true record. Okay, so therefore we'll move on to item five, and this takes us to traffic items, five point one, Brattleby B thirteen ninety eight, proposed thirty mile an hour speed limit. Jan Gibson please.
Thank you Chairman, first report today relates to a proposed thirty mile an hour limit on the B thirteen ninety eight. We were asked by the local member to assess this against the policy criteria and the level of limit is determined by the mean speed of traffic, which in this case was thirty five miles per hour. This means that it may be considered as a borderline case and the recommendation in the report is that approval is given for us to begin the consultation for the, um, in order to introduce thirty mile an hour limit as shown at appendix A. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Uh, would anybody like to speak to this application? I know Brattleby, uh, the local member. Would the local member like to speak to it?
Thank you Chairman, um, obviously I was, uh, asked to look at this from the parish council and we've got the Chair of the parish council in the chamber today. Uh, fully support the motion to reduce to thirty mile an hour. It's a busy road through a, through a quiet village and, uh, I think we all support the, the reduction. Uh, residents has been something they've been asking for, for quite a long time, so, uh, fully support this, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, councillor Bootroyd. Certainly I, I've sometimes used this route as a, um, a way through to Gainsborough. Um, certainly the A fifteen closes on a very regular basis nowadays for whatever incident north of Lincoln. Uh, so I know this road very well, I'm quite prepared, I'm quite happy to move it from the chair. Can I have a second? Thank you, uh, I'll take councillor, uh, Smith. Anybody wish to speak to the application? Okay, so all in favour please show now. Okay, that is sorted and granted. Move you on to five point two, which is Holton Clay, Louth Road, proposed waiting restrictions. Jan please.
Thank you, so this concerns, um, the presence of on-street parking adjacent to accesses out of the nearby car park. Next slide please. Um, we're proposing restrictions in the areas shown in red in order to facilitate access and visibility out of the side roads and along Louth Road itself. The restrictions will only apply during the day, but objections have been received in relation to the displaced parking which may result and affect nearby residents and inconvenience to those working in the shops and businesses nearby. Now, the aim of these restrictions is to improve traffic flow and visibility in this area of higher, um, hi- higher activity in terms of pedestrians and traffic. And it's therefore recommended in the report that the objections are overruled so that the order as advertised may be introduced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, earlier this morning I had councillor Marfleet, uh, calling me saying that he'd been very supportive of this scheme and bringing it forward and he agreed with the recommendation to put this into place. Um, I was in Holton Clay as recently as a week last Wednesday, uh, and, uh, I did take a little bit of time wandering through, so I'm quite happy to move this recommendation. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the application or second it?
I think second, yeah.
Thank you councillor Pepper. Anybody wish to speak to the application? Okay, proposed by myself, seconded by councillor Pepper, uh, recommendation is printed, all in favour please show now. Thank you. Uh, anybody against? That's clearly carried, so that's, uh, fabulous. I'll move you on to five point three then, which takes us to Horn Castle, Merrim Road and Queen Street propose no waiting at any time. Jan please.
Thank you, so, um, we're proposing some no waiting at any time here, next slide please. Um, along Merrim, uh, lane itself, next slide please, and along Queen Street, um, focusing on junctions and accesses, we've had seven objections mainly around the potential loss of, um, residents' parking in the area. But given that we're only, um, proposing restrictions where parking would cause obstruction of, uh, to visibility or traffic flow, uh, we would recommend that the objections are overruled so that the order may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
So I'm looking at the committee and thinking, oh, I probably know this area better than most people again. I don't know why, I seem to trouble a lot round Lincolnshire. Um, I worked, many years ago I went to Horn Castle School, I went to the grammar school in Horn Castle, so I do know the streets of Horn Castle very well for one reason or another. Um, and I can quite happily say that this, uh, Foundry Street, Merrim Road and Queen Street, uh, I don't think there's been much of a modification over the many years. Um, it's certainly the old architecture of the area. Um, I've read the report, I know the area, I'm quite happy to propose the recommendation. councillor Skinner.
Thank you Chairman, I also know the area and, uh, I'm happy to second.
Thank you, I will ask for speakers. Seeing none, proposed by myself, seconded by councillor Skinner, all in favour please show now. Thank you, anybody against? No, so therefore that's carried as printed. Um, which brings us on to five point four, which is Lincoln Cross Cliff Hill, Cross Cliff Close, proposed waiting restrictions. Jan please.
Thank you, um, so this relates to on-street parking generated by pupils attending a nearby secondary school. Um, a parking takes place in both Cross Cliff Court and on Cross Cliff Hill and we're proposing daytime restrictions which will apply Monday to Friday. We've received two objections raising concerns about the impact on residents and their access to, for parking for deliveries and visitors. Um, however, it should be noted that parking for purposes of loading and unloading will be exempt in the order and the impact will be reduced, uh, on residents by the limited times that these restrictions will apply. Recommendation in the report therefore is that the objections are overruled so that the order i- is introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Clark, you've registered to speak to this application.
Uh, thank you Chair, for allowing me to speak on this item. Also thank you to the TRO team for the work they've put in. Um, I have five schools in Booton, there's a major parking issue at four of them. When supermarkets are built, you don't tell the shoppers to park round the corner at the side streets, but that is exactly what happens with schools. And that is unfair on the residents when often the verges are churned up, the paths are blocked and the, uh, drives are also blocked. That's the issue when I attended Cross Cliff Hill after a resident rang up to complain. The cars weren't exactly parked on the footpath, they was abandoned on the footpath. They are students from the nearby school. This makes the residents walk actually on the road. The junction of the close and the hill is unbelievable because when you actually, the way they are parked at the minute, when you go out to actually see oncoming traffic on Cross Cliff Hill, you have to actually go on to the hill itself, which is dangerous. So I fully support this, um, application.
Thank you councillor Clark. Um, as far as I remember in this area, all the roads are actually curbed. So I think that if people are going across the curb, I don't know, is that a highway issue or is it a policing issue with regard to if the curbs aren't dropped? It's a highway issue. Okay, but I'm correct in thinking all the curbs are, all the, all the, uh, the footways in the area and the roads are curbed? Yeah? Okay, right. Okay, so, uh, I hear what councillor Clark says and, um, I do come down cross the cliff on a frequent basis.
Councillor Murray.
Councillor Murray. I'm quite happy for you to propose it, I'll second it. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, therefore proposed by councillor Murray, seconded by myself, all in favour please show now. Okay, clearly carried. Uh, five point five then, New Bolingbrook B eleven eighty-three Main Road, proposed thirty mile an hour limit. Jan please.
Thank you, so we received a request from the local member for a review of the existing fifty mile an hour limit, next slide please. Um, on the B eleven eighty-three through New Bolingbrook, as the committee will know, the level of limit that we set at any location relies on the mean speed of traffic, which in this case was thirty-six miles per hour, which allows it to be considered as a borderline case in line with the policy. Um, it's therefore recommended in the report that a, um, a thirty mile an hour limit is subject to public consultation at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll let it to committee, councillor Ashton.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I'm privileged to be the local member, uh, for New Bolingbrook and having considerable experience of discussing this issue with the local town council, with local residents over a great, um, uh, o- o- over an extended period of time. Um, I'm really, really pleased to see this on the agenda, recommend, uh, with the opportunity to secure a thirty mile an hour speed limit at this location, um, for the first time. This is one of those locations where you've got the core of the historic village, um, that's still at a fifty. I am so pleased that it meets the criteria, um, under our, um, borderline case policy at four point two, uh, for a thirty mile an hour. This will work in conjunction with a fifty mile an hour limit, uh, which is just at the south, that section between, uh, New Bolingbrook and Carrington covering, uh, Stickney Lane and Mill Lane, uh, will, uh, as I understand, now be coming down to a fifty, so that will work in conjunction with this limit, uh, to make a genuine improvement to that location around the town hall and the bus stops in the core of New Bolingbrook. And I would, uh, like to move, uh, that it goes to a thirty please.
Thank you, I know that, uh, many people use this road, it's, uh, very much, it's a seven mile straight isn't it? Uh, effectively with an awful lot of people using it as a convenient way from going north to south in the county and, you know, we do need to look at pedestrian safety, uh, in this zone, so if the local member is supportive, I'm quite happy to second the application. Would anybody else like to speak to the application? Okay, so proposed by councillor Ashton, seconded by myself, all in favour please show now. Thank you, anybody against? Okay, that's clearly carried too. Five point six then takes us to Ashby Road, Spilsby, proposed waiting restrictions. Jan please.
Thank you, so in response to a request from the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership, next slide please, um, who plan to introduce a school crossing patrol at this point where, um, there's high pedestrian footfall, um, owing to the fact that school is at the end of Blacksmith Lane opposite, um, so we have therefore proposed an extension to the waiting restrictions as shown in blue in appendix A. We've received six objections mainly around the loss of parking for residents, um, close by and the concerns that this entails, as I, I itemised in the report. It's also queried as to why the restriction should apply Monday to Saturday when a school crossing patrol is not in operation. Um, the purpose of the restrictions is to enhance forward visibility of the school crossing patrol when it's working, um, but we do support the view that the restrictions will not be required on a Saturday. It's been the case, recommendation in the report is that the objections are overruled, but also that the minor modification as highlighted in the report and in appendix A is upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to let it to committee. Last Chairman.
Thank you Chairman, um, thank you for your report on that. Um, I do note the objections, but I also note the request has come via the Road Safety Partnership, which I think is very important. Um, and I think with the adjustment made to incorporate the residents' concerns about having those restrictions in place on a Saturday, I'd be happy to propose this for approval.
Thank you, and on the basis that it's a proposal from Road Safety, I'm quite happy to second. Would anybody like to speak to the application? Okay, that's fair time, we'll vote now, all in favour please show. Anybody against? Clearly carried, thank you. So we go to five point seven, which is Park Avenue, Sutterton, proposed waiting loading restrictions. Jan please.
Thank you, Sutterton Park Avenue, we're proposing waiting restrictions and mandatory school keep clear markings, next slide please. These are in the area around the school access which is subject to heavy parking during pick-up and drop-off times. Um, we're proposing further restrictions outside properties number twenty-six thirty Park Avenue also. So we've had one objection received specifically to these, these latter restrictions that we're proposing in, uh, stating that these will cause inconvenience to residents. However, this area, if subject to parking, it is the only access from the footways to those properties and it does result in obstruction to wheelchair users. Uh, this being the case, it's recommended that the objection is overruled so that this scheme may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you Jan. Now, I think hiding somewhere within the IT, we might have councillor Mike Brooks, uh, wishing to speak to the application.
Yeah, thank you Chairman, um, yes, I would like to speak to support, uh, the proposals here in this report. Um, the, the proposal do address concerns about unsafe and nuisance pa- nuisance parking, uh, which have been raised over the years and the proposals are fully supported by Sutterton Parish Council and myself. Uh, the only objection received as you've just, uh, been told is about the proposed restrictions to the access to numbers twenty-five and thirty Park Avenue and these dwellings are bungalows which are often occupied by wheelchair users. Vehicles are regularly parked, blocking access to these, uh, for these wheelchair users, uh, for many hours at a time. Um, I've received many complaints over the years from residents about this and, uh, one wheelchair user came home one evening and people attending a function at the village hall were blocking the access and it took a great deal of time and distress to track the, the drivers down. Uh, these proposals will address this access problem and as it's already, uh, Jan's already said, uh, this is the only access to those bungalows, so to block it up, um, for wheelchair users i- is, is definitely not good. So in cl- in conclusion, I ask the committee to please support these restrictions as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brooks. Um, I'm very pleased that you've commented that you as local member and the parish council are supportive of the report, uh, as printed, so on that basis I am going to move the report based upon your local information. I must confess that I haven't been through this particular area, but I do take the advice of the, uh, the two, or the two individuals, um, the parish council and the local member. So I'm moving it, councillor Skinner please.
Happy to second this, I, I know the area, uh, been over it many times and I think it'll make a big difference as, as the member says. Thank you.
Thank you, would anybody like to speak to the application? Okay, proposed by myself, seconded by councillor Skinner, all in favour please show. Thank you, anybody against? Clearly carried. Okay, well that brings us to the end of the traffic items, I would like to thank Jan for bringing, um, well, seven applications there and, uh, I think, uh, I think that's good business that we've done there and thank you for writing the reports. Uh, this now brings us on to the county matters applications and we have, uh, not too many, but I think there could be an interesting debate or two to be held here and there. So, six point one takes us to the supplementary report, uh, for the extension of the Ropsley Quarry application, S twenty-four O two thirty-six. And I believe Mr McBride you're going to introduce this.
Thank you Chairman, good morning councillors, yeah, the first, uh, planning paper this morning takes us to, as you say, the supplementary report, uh, in connection with the application by, uh, Johnston Quarry Group for an extension to the existing limestone quarry at, uh, Ropsley, Long Ho- Long Hollow, um, and the parish of Ropsley. So the committee will recall that at the last, um, meeting in December, or the meeting in December, that, uh, following consideration of the officer report, which is attached to the supplementary report, the committee resolved to defer making a decision on the application for a site visit and to request further information, um, be brought back to the committee to give them some further guidance around some of the issues that are raised during that debate. As already heard, the site visit took place on the thirty-first of January, when the committee were able to view the existing quarry, the site of the proposed extension and the local road network, in particularly, um, going to the village of Ropsley. In respect of the information that was requested, uh, the supplementary report before the committee picks up particularly in terms of the concerns raised by councillors about the need for this development, so, um, we provided, um, some further information, um, to address that point. Secondly, uh, the distance between the extraction boundary and the residential property at Chain Farmhouse, and there's some more information in the report about that, and during the site visit, the committee were able to see, uh, as it was staked out, the, uh, distance between the proposed extraction boundary and the dwelling, um, to understand that distance and to, to see that that's now been increased from the original fifty metres to a hundred metres standoff. In terms of, um, the HGVs, the applicant has put forward a unilateral undertaking so that vehicles would only use the main highway and avoid, um, the, the local, um, roads into the village of Ropsley, except in exceptional circumstances such as if there was a delivery required for that, uh, in that vicinity, but other than that, uh, the vehicles would need to stick on to the main highway. And finally, although, um, as the committee was informed, it wasn't, uh, a matter that they needed to take into consideration the planning balance in terms of the, uh, public footpath and the works that had been suggested, um, the committee were able to see that, uh, the applicant as a goodwill gesture has actually undertaken the works that were, um, required, uh, in consultation with the public railway officer. So I'll just quickly go through the presentation, just to remind councillors, um, what they saw and, uh, a little bit of background as to what the application is for. So there's first slide which shows, um, the location, um, so you're all familiar with that, next slide please. And again, the area proposed, um, for the, um, extension, um, with the existing quarry, um, shown, um, there as well, next slide please. Again, this, um, shows the, um, a plan with the existing quarry outlined and the application site outlined in red and the location of the farmhouse, of the dwelling in the, um, top, um, corner at the northwest of the site. Next slide please. Um, an aerial photograph with a red line and the existing quarry shown on there to give some context, next slide please. And I think these are just a, a series of, of drawings showing the different phases, um, as, as was explained during the site visit, that it would be, um, done in a number of phases, um, and that, um, is, um, the detail shown on that plan, next slide please. And then just a, a series of photographs which show the, um, the application site in, uh, context to the, um, so- surrounded landscape and highway, so I won't dwell too much on these photographs because you've obviously been to the site and, uh, seen this in, um, for yourselves. We just go through then and then, um, we keep going through, and that's, looks at the overview of the site, the actual site itself, um. And this was just the, the additional pho- um, photograph that I've added in since the previous presentation and this, uh, photograph just shows, um, in a bit more detail the, the state of the, the chain farmhouse, whilst that doesn't sort of detract from its, uh, from any sort of protection it would get as a residential amenity, just there shows that, um, obviously no one is currently living, um, in that farmhouse. Uh, the caravan that you can see on the photograph doesn't have permission from the district council to be situated there, so I just wanted to, to, to draw your attention to that. Um, then if I bring you back to the report itself, the supplementary report, as I say, all the issues that were raised previously by the committee have been, uh, included in the report. Um, if there's any questions around the, um, detailing around the, um, the need for the development, my colleague, Mike Daly here is the principal officer and the case officer can answer any questions, uh, regarding the data that's been provided to demonstrate the need for the, uh, for the extension to the quarry. Uh, but other than that, hopefully it's all, um, sort of self-explanatory and the recommendation on page sixty-one is that planning permission be granted subject to the completion of the section one O six plan obligation, the unilateral undertaking, a copy which is, um, attached as an appendix, um, and also that following, um, the, the, the normal biodiversity net gain sort of information and that the planning permission be granted subject to the twenty-four conditions that are set out in appendix B.
Thank you Mr McBride, now I have two speakers registered for this application and I'm going to take them in the order I've got and been given them, so, uh, the first one is the local member councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, can I just thank the committee for, uh, taking the time to go out to, uh, Ropsley and, uh, look at the site themselves and, uh, I, I fully support the, uh, I think the, um, pragmatic changes to, uh, the various recommendations. In particular, I think, um, the committee would have seen that, uh, the issue we've got here is with the quarry in terms of traffic movements, uh, obviously there are a lot of lorries, uh, which go north, uh, from the crossroads towards Ancaster and I think if, uh, if, uh, lorries come by, you'll see the state of the road is pretty grim there and that it is costing the council a lot of money to try and, uh, maintain a, a road which frankly isn't really suitable for HGVs. So I suppose the two point, only two questions I have, obviously the, fully welcome the conversations about, uh, the public right of way, uh, presumably I'll be informed of local members sometime, what's Presumably, I'll be informed as local member sometime what's going on. I don't really want to have to be chasing around after it, so I don't know anybody from the public rights way department is here, but it would be quite useful to know, be informed of the conversations, because I think there is a pragmatic solution. I suppose the only issue is, I'd probably like to ask about the, how effective these agreements would be in terms of dissuading HGVs from going through these minor roads. I mean, as an example, I was in Corby Glen at the weekend, I know it's nowhere near Ropsley, but interestingly, I was a resident complaining that there were quarry lorries going through Corby Glen at half past 10 at night. This was actually from Creton Quarry, which is actually in the Nice chairman's patch, but the same company which actually operates this quarry, I believe. So I suppose it's a question of fully support what you're doing, but how effective and what can be done in terms of making sure that HGV drivers, particularly contractors, are encouraged or dissuaded from using unsuitable minor roads to as a perceived shortcut. Apart from that, thank you for your, for your visit, and thank you for the amended recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Hill. So I'll move on to my second speaker, which is, I believe, Mark Sutherland. So if you'd like to come down, we'll give you a microphone, and we have up to three minutes to address the committee, of course. So the floor is yours when you're ready.
Morning. My name is Mark Sutherland, and I'm the general manager of Johnston Quarry Group, part of Sigma Rock, which specialises in limestone operations across the UK and Europe. Our quarry at Ropsley is a source of pride, not only for supplying vital resources and contributing to the local economy, but also for our commitment to minimising the impact on community and environment. Today, I wish to address the proposed extension of our quarry and its necessity. We are dedicated to listening to your concerns as stakeholders in this process, aiming to act responsibly for both business and community interests. Ropsley Quarry has a strong reputation for professional management and responsible practices. Our entrance design ensures safe traffic management, and with a double waybridge for smooth flow from the A52, we maintain a tidy site with a state-of-the-art wheel wash to keep vehicles clean. By extending our existing quarry rather than establishing a new site, we build on responsible management and established infrastructure and minimising community disruption. Recently, committee members visit our site to understand our operations better. We recognise that there are substantial economic benefits of extending the quarry, including local employment opportunities and essential minerals for regional infrastructure growth. However, we also understand that these benefits must not come at the expense of the community or the environment. The current quarry is exhausted, and without an extension, we risk losing jobs and vital resources for sustainable development. In response to the concerns raised at the planning committee in December, we've listened and we've made adjustments, such as increasing the setback of the proposed extraction area to 100 metres from Chane Farmhouse. Additionally, we have addressed concerns about heavy goods vehicles traffic through the submission of a voluntary legal agreement that restricts the local road use. We've already improved the public footpath along the A52 in response to the local parish's concerns, which members observed during last week's visit. The proposed extension will create a substantial area of calcareous grassland, which will provide a valuable ecological habitat when the quarry is closed, demonstrating our commitment to environmental responsibility. In conclusion, the officers recognise that our application aligns with the relevant planning policies and justifies the release of further aggregate reserves. We're committed to development without unacceptable impacts on the local amenity of the environment, ensuring our operations contribute positively to our community and represent a sustainable development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions of Mr Sutherland? I'll give you an opportunity. No? Okay, so, Mr McBride, two seconds. Mr McBride, please.
Thank you very much. Just a question, it was raised earlier about the times of vehicles coming and going, and there are obviously restrictions, but presumably sometimes they come very early and sit outside. I don't know how you control that. Have you got some way of controlling that? Thank you.
Yes, we'd have to make sure that all hauliers are briefed. A lot of the wagons that we use are third party, so that would be done through communication with them to make sure that the times that they could come to site are very, very clear. For any deliveries where we're using wagons that we're sourcing, we can have even more control on that to make sure that that happens.
Okay, Mr McBride, you were indicating?
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I was just going to sort of put the question that the councillor Hill asked about, what sort of mechanisms are there to prevent vehicles contravening the unilateral agreement? Obviously, from an enforcement perspective, ultimately, we've got legal measures that we can take and take legal action, but conscious that can sometimes take quite a while. So it'd be interesting just to hear what the applicant can put in place to make sure that the vehicles that go into the site do do so in line with the unilateral undertaking that's being proposed.
Again, it'll be enforcing this with our hauliers and letting them know exactly what the site rules are, and that they'll not be loaded before a certain time. Also, when we give them the site rules for that, we'll ensure that they can understand what routes that they can take and what routes that they can't take. And if we get a haulier who isn't following any agreements, we'll not use them again.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, I'll allow you to retire, and I'll open the, open to committee. Obviously, we had a site visit there a couple of weeks ago, and it was very useful. It gave us the opportunity to see not just the local road network, but it allowed us to see the quarry. And the quarry currently is not in production. We did wander down the track, past the wheel wash, into the top half of the quarry and viewed the various bits and pieces. Coming back, the company were very positive. I did ask if we could see the wheel wash in operation, and they did demonstrate the wheel wash to the committee, which I thought was useful. And indeed, Mr Sutherland's commented with regard to the additional setback that's being offered around the farmhouse to the north-west. So they're all very positive things. The local member appears to be reasonably satisfied, and I believe that the officers appear to be reasonably satisfied with the application. So on the basis of that, I will move the recommendation, but I will encourage anybody to make comment with the application or indeed a second. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, chairman. I'll be very brief. As you said, the site visit was very, very helpful, and also the agreements that have been made also have persuaded any concerns that I previously had. So I'm very happy to second the recommendation as printed, chairman.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak, vice chairman?
Thank you, chairman. I won't be voting on this item, as I didn't attend the site visit, but I do know this area really, really well. It is in my adjoining patch. I'm really pleased to see that the distance has been increased to 100 metres for the farmhouse, and recognise we've got a duty to protect residential amenity, whether a property is occupied or not. With my division also being adjacent, I supported obviously councillor Hill's comments about the possible impact on local roads and ensuring that they're protected. And I'm sort of really pleased that the company have decided to undertake a, yeah, have decided to go with a unilateral undertaking, but hope that measures they've mentioned will be enforced if necessary. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Pepper?
Thank you, Jan. I just wanted to raise a point that I wasn't in attendance at the meeting on the December the 2nd, but I did watch that slightly on early meeting online, and I did attend the site visit, and I feel as I'm able to vote on this unless someone tells me otherwise.
So I don't think there's anything for you to address, Mr McBride or Mr Daly. Okay, so I'm going to, councillors, Seer.
Me same, because I'm not at the meeting, but I went on site visit and I watched the video.
So if you feel you have, if you're party to all the information. Andrew?
Yes, sorry, just to say, yes, in terms of the council's constitution, it does explicitly say that it's not the previous meeting, it's the site visit, and if they have been in the full attendance of the item. So both councillors Pepper and Seer, and councillors Hall as well, who were attendants in the site visit, can vote on this application, as they've been in the room for the entire item.
Which was exactly where I was going to go, but that's no problem. Thank you. Okay, you're paid to say it, I'm not, so that's no problem. So, okay, so you've all got the feel for it. All those in favour of the application, please show now. Have you got your numbers? Those against, please show now. Abstentions, please show now. Three abstentions. Okay, that's clearly carried, so that one is passed. Okay, so we'll therefore move on to the next application, which takes us to 6.2, and this is Kettleby Quarry, Brig Road, Kettleby, 147736. Mr McBride, please.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, another quarry, this time relating to sand and gravel. So planning permission sought by Breeden for an extension to the consented Kettleby Quarry. This includes retention of the existing haul road, bagging plant and mineral processing plant, and restoration of the extension area to nature conservation interest, including glass, grassland, reed bags and water bodies at Kettleby Quarry, Brig Road, Kettleby. This is a major application, supported by an environmental statement, which has been prepared in accordance with the Town and Country Planning Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations. The environmental statement has assessed the potential impact of the development together with mitigation measures proposed to avoid, reduce, and if possible, remedy any significant adverse impacts. So we go through the slides before we go to the report. So the first slide shows the location of the site, so just during your attent, sorry, just click back on there, so just to make you aware that obviously whilst the extension to the application is within Lincolnshire, the existing quarry is actually situated in North Lincolnshire. So it's clearly right on the boundary between Lincolnshire County Council and North Lincolnshire Council, and therefore the issues raised or the North Lincolnshire Council have been fully consulted on this application to make sure that they're aware of it and have an opportunity to comment. You see there that sort of going southwards from the red line area is the proposed access point, which does go on to a road within Lincolnshire, and that's sort of set out in the committee report. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit more closer detail, so the red line area shows obviously the application before the committee today, and the blue area shows the existing quarry operations, and you get an idea there of the context. You can also see there in green the plantation that there's detailed in the committee report, which would be, needed to be removed to facilitate this development. Next slide, please. So the next couple of slides just provide some sort of detail as to the phasing of the, of the operations as normal. As you know, for quarry operations, that these tend to be done in different phases, and that plan there shows the different proposed phases for the operations to take place. Next slide, please. This slide shows what's proposed at the end of the 14 years, once all the material had been excavated. You can see there that the restoration consists of largely water bodies, but also quite a lot of other sort of hedging and ecological features. Next slide, please. This is just a cross-section showing the depth of the excavations. Next slide, please. This slide shows the different land classifications in terms of the agricultural land. You'll see in the report that there is some land that's, agricultural land that's been lost, and again, this slide just outlines the different areas and the different categories of agricultural land to be lost. Next slide, please. This just basically shows the habitats plan of the area, with some detail there of the different ecological features. Next slide, please. Now we'll go through a series of photographs, so this shows the existing access point on to the main highway, the southern access point, and again, a photograph looking northwards along the route of the access. Slide, please. And then some views over the proposed application area. This is looking from the east to west over, which includes obviously the land that's to be excavated. And in the background, you can see the plantation that's proposed to be felled. Next slide, please. Again, some, this is the eastern edge of the site. You may, from the report, know that the Viking Way long-distance footpath runs relatively close to the site, and this is part of that route, the footpath there, you can see. Next slide, please. Again, another sort of overview of the site. This has probably been taken from the higher piece of land to the east, and gives you an overview of the area to be excavated and the plantation in the background. And then just a few photographs to finish off with, showing the existing site operations. So this is the existing plant area. And this one shows a view to the distance to one of the closest residential properties. Next slide. Again, a view from the higher ground to the east of the application site. And some machinery that obviously you would associate with a quarry activity. Includes a presentation, so back to the report. You'll see that this is a detailed report setting out, as normal, a background to the application, sets out the area covered by the application site, which is around 54 hectares. It's estimated that around two and a half million tonnes of sand and gravel is available in this extension, and the extraction period would be expected to excavate around 170,000 tonnes per annum. Working on that basis, the calculation suggests it will be 14 years to complete the proposed excavation of sand and gravel. The report then goes into quite a bit of detail about the various operations in terms of the mineral extraction itself, also detail of the site operations and processes that take place on a sand and gravel excavation, which probably the committee is relatively familiar with, given that you've dealt with a number of sand and gravel excavations over the years. So I won't go into too much detail, and then it finally picks up there, the restoration on page 154, setting out the detail for the restoration. It is quite a comprehensive restoration scheme, which the applicant has worked with council officers very hard to come up with a scheme that meets not only our aspirations, but also some of the concerns that were originally raised by North Lincolnshire Council. As normal for a report that includes an environmental statement, so on page 136, the details of the environmental statement are reviewed, going through all the various chapters as part of the normal process. I won't go through those, but they are there in the report. I'm sure if you needed to, you'd have an opportunity to look at any particular topics that you might have been particularly interested in. So once the report goes through the environmental statements or the chapters, a normal section on sites and surroundings, and hopefully those photographs also have just given you some context as well to set out where the site is and what the landscape is. Bottom of page 179 sets out the relevant planning policy context with, as normal, national and local plan policies for you to take into consideration. Top of page 182 starts the review of the... Top of page 182 starts the review of the consultation and publicity that was undertaken for this application. Or just, as councillor Smith has already made reference, you'll see there that Bigby Parish Council at 50B have made some comments. Perhaps the applicant will explain whether those comments have been taken into account as to, as the application has developed. But largely, whilst some of the initial comments from some of the consultees had required additional information, particularly North Lincolnshire Council there, at the bottom of page 182 and on to 183, 184, you'll see that they have raised quite a lot of issues. But following response and dialogue between the applicant, the case officer, and the North Lincolnshire Council, then hopefully we've managed to resolve most of those issues to a satisfactory level. I think that was largely the main concern that was raised. At the top of page 187, the Forestry Commission have made some comments about the removal of the plantation, woodland plantation, which is picked up in the conclusions section. And also, the Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust, at the bottom of page 188 on to 189, also had some issues that needed to be resolved. But again, through careful dialogue with the applicant and the case officer, much of that has now been addressed, as set out in the conclusions and recommendations section. Other than those consultees that I've highlighted, in terms of the publicity, there was no comments received from local residents, from either the site notice or press notice about this application, and the district council, West Lincolnshire District Council confirmed that they didn't wish to make any comments on the application. Page 195 starts the conclusions section, and you'll see there the paragraph 54 lists all the various topics which have been looked at in detail through that conclusions section. It's a very thorough review of the various topics, the relevant planning policies, and whether ultimately, as officers, we're in agreement or not to the in respect of the relevant policies for each of those topics. So, bringing it all together, Chairman, the recommendation is that on page 238 on to page 234, that the application is, sets out the normal recommendation in respect of environmental statements, and that planning permission be granted, subject to the conditions set out in the report.
Thank you, Mr McBride. We have a speaker, Mr Kelly, I believe, would like to address the committee. So, Mr Kelly, we can afford you three minutes to speak to committee. There might be a question or two to follow. I don't know, we'll wait and see. But make yourself comfortable, there is no rush.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Neil Kelly, and I'm the Planning and Estates Manager for Breeden, who operate the current Kettleby Quarry. Mineral extraction at Kettleby is well established and has taken place since the 1970s. The current quarry struggles two mineral planning authorities, with the processing plant located within Lincolnshire and the current extraction area in North Links. The current plant site is regularly monitored by the county council and does not receive any complaints from local residents. The proposal in front of you today involves an extension to the existing quarry, which has nearly exhausted all of its existing reserves. The proposed extension is already allocated within the adopted minerals local plan under policy MS07/08-CL, except for one small field adjacent to the plant site. This field and the entire proposed extraction area is included as a proposed allocation in the emerging minerals local plan under policy SG16. The application proposes an extension to the quarry, which could deliver up to 2.4 million tonnes of sand and gravel. Based on an extraction rate of 170,000 tonnes per annum, this equates to around 14 years. The emerging local plan sets out that there is a shortfall of around 22 million tonnes of sand and gravel up to the end of the proposed plan period. This reduces to nine million tonnes when existing allocations, not including Kettleby, and committed sites are brought forward. Kettleby has been identified by the county council as one such site that could meet the shortfall, and as such, is identified as an existing and proposed allocation. Permitting this application will go a long way to ensuring the continuity of supply of sand and gravel in Lincolnshire. Once a site has been worked, it is proposed to restore it back to a series of water bodies and agricultural land, which will deliver biodiversity net gain of 55% for habitats and 237% for heteros. As the site is already an existing quarry, there are a number of measures that are already in place to reduce any impacts arising on residential amenity, including noise limits and dust management measures. It is proposed that these mitigation measures that are already in place will be updated in line with the suggested planning conditions. It is proposed that the extension will utilise the existing haul road, and mineral will be processed at the existing plant site. Proposals will not result in a significant increase in vehicle movements over and above those already associated with the site. Any increase would be less than one vehicle per hour. It should be noted that no significant objections have been received to the scheme, and where concerns were raised, Breeden have worked with the statutory consultees to overcome these, and as a result, there are no outstanding issues to be resolved, which cannot successfully be dealt with by planning conditions, and those are set in front of you today. The proposal will also result in the retention of seven jobs and further downstream roles associated with the production of concrete, and these will also be safeguarded. Given the site is allocated with the existing local plan and emerging local plan, and no objections have been received, it is recommended the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, you're one in time, you have 10 seconds spare. But well done. Are there any questions? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr McBride touched on this, and I know in the report it does briefly go into the concerns that Bigby Parish Council has. I just wondered if you could expand on that a little for me? And then, secondly, you say in your comments there that it's and you've given reference to the preferred allocation. It's a small field, how much of that is in size? Is that in acres or hectares, whichever is easier to explain?
Okay, so, in reference to Bigby Parish Council, I've been made aware of their concerns. I went and did a presentation to them at one of their parish council meetings last summer, before the application was submitted. They subsequently then commented on the application to which Breeden responded. Post those, post the response, I invited Bigby to a site meeting and gave them a site tour of the operation, so they could fully understand the quarry workings. And as part of the discussions, we've offered a community liaison group, which is secured by planning conditions, so they can be kept up to date with what the quarry operations are doing and be regularly involved going forward. So, hopefully, that's addressed their concerns. In terms of the field, it is, it's the field between the woodland and the plant site. It's about two hectares in size, I think off the top of my head, without measuring, it's not, it's the smallest out of all the phases that's proposed.
So, nonmetric for you is five acres. Councillor and Mrs Overton, please.
Thank you very much. I am concerned about the woodland. I recognise it's called a plantation, meaning it's been planted, as many of our woodlands have, but it's not a mixed woodland, it's not just conifer. And I am surprised that it doesn't seem to be adequate provision for replacements. Normally, if we take down one tree, we have to replace 11, in Northquay even. So, I don't know, I'm uneasy about that. And I'm also unhappy about the biodiversity net gain proposals, you know, increase that you suggest, which don't reflect taking down a woodland, which is, I forgot how many hectares it is now, but is of a reasonable size. So, I'm just really surprised that you didn't just leave the woodland alone. Thank you.
In reference to biodiversity net gain, we have run the Natural England biodiversity metric through the, as part of this application, and that does involve the loss of the woodland. So, the figures that I've given you do take account of that. I agree, it is a plantation woodland. It was due to be felled around 2040 anyway. It was subject to a woodland management plan with the Forestry Commission that actually expired in, well, last month. It's unclear whether that's been renewed, but that did grant a felling licence under a woodland management plan. In terms of the replacement, we have proposed significant woodland around all the water bodies. They have been, the species we have chosen are a more native species to the UK, rather than, you know, conifers, et cetera. So, we believe we've satisfactorily addressed that concern.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to come back on there, if I might. Firstly, conifers, et cetera, it does actually say mixed woodland. It does actually say it includes oak. So, I think it's a bit disingenuous to just discard it as conifers, et cetera. And we haven't heard how many trees are being replanted. And I think the other point is that a whole woodland is obviously a very tall structure. It's not like taking out a field of wheat. You know, you've got a lot of different layers, so the actual value of that to wildlife is enormous. So, I am, you know, I still feel very uneasy about that. Thank you.
Okay, so that's a comment for the main debate, rather than a question to the applicant. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so thank you for your comments. Mr McBride, any comments before we open to committee?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Open to committee. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I only have two comments, and one is a question to Mr McBride. The first comment, Chairman, really is, and it is a concern, although I appreciate it is probably not a planning reason for refusal, it is a concern that there could be a potential cumulative loss of best-mast versatile agricultural land, given the multiple NSIPS that have been granted, in my opinion, rather recklessly, and the number of NSIPS that we are still basically under assault from. Excuse me. This issue has been considered, and I appreciate it's been considered during the application process. Additionally, Chairman, as it goes in detail in the report and says that the biodiversity net gain mitigates the harm caused by the loss of best-mast versatile agricultural land. Whilst that may do in planning speak, Chairman, I think there'll be many people that disagree with that assertion for a whole host of reasons, because one is, one serves a totally different purpose to the other and is not replicatable in its purpose or its intent. Secondly, Chairman, my question, it's frustrating we haven't had more information provided in detail on soil handling, processes to be employed. Are officers content that the conditions specifically 19 to 21 will suffice in ensuring that is dealt with accordingly? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, there isn't a question there, that's just a statement?
The second question was, are officers content on the conditions? That was the question. I appreciate the first one was a statement, Chairman, but the question is, are officers content that conditions 19 and 21 are effective and will do their intended, fulfil their intended purpose?
Okay, Councillor, Mrs Overton, can you turn your microphone off, please? And I'm going back to Mr McBride now with the questions.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Councillor Smith, for the question. Yes, we are satisfied. I think there's been quite a lot of work with Natural England and other stakeholders around this, and we feel that those conditions, if they are fully complied with, which obviously we will check and ensure that they are, then they will do what they're required to do and address that particular issue. So, we are satisfied that that is, that that will be dealt with appropriately.
Anybody else? Councillor Ashton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm reasonably satisfied that if Natural England are involved in advising and are content with the direction of travel on this, then, given that they, as an organisation, do tend to gold-plate anything that they can get near on biodiversity and habitat, I feel that I have to accept, I have to accept that. I'm more than happy to move it for approval, Chairman, in line with the recommendation.
Okay, Councillor, Mrs Overton.
Thank you very much. I am unhappy about the loss of the woodland. 16.4 hectares of broad-leaved woodland, that's a lot. Bearing in mind that Lincolnshire is already short, and we have a commitment to increase the cover, tree cover. So, I feel that this, I really don't think we should allow that. I think that's not acceptable. And I haven't heard, I'm not happy with the, I don't feel that the proposals are adequate. In our documents, it does say that the Forestry Commission would normally expect a better return. They'd expect much more clear plantings, and I don't think we've seen that. So, I'm not content that that is properly mitigated, and indeed, I think it should just be left alone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councillor Hall, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to say, I understand Councillor Overton's concerns. However, you know, I do think that the applicant has gone through the appropriate process, and the, you know, the biodiversity net gain does deal with that particular issue. I think it's a very well-written report, and I totally agree with Councillor Ashton in the comments that he made, so I would like to second the application. Thank you.
Is there anything you need to come back on? Mr McBride, no? Okay. So, committee are quiet. I have the application proposed by Councillor Ashton, seconded by Councillor Hall, that it is granted as printed. All in favour, please show now. Those against, please show now. One against. Any abstentions, that is therefore carried and granted. So, that takes us to the next application, which is 6.3, which is Burton Lane Eastern, S240544, the updating and redevelopment of the existing waste water treatment facility. Mr McBride?
The Chairman is finding the right papers. Yeah, so this report takes us to Eastern, and as you say, it's dealing with a waste-related activity rather than minerals. So, planning permission is sought for refurbishment, and basically of redevelopment of the existing wastewater treatment facility, and the installation of an anaerobic digestion plant with a capacity to produce five megawatts of renewable energy at Burton Lane Eastern. The proposal involves the expected annual throughput of 122,000 tonnes of waste. Most of this would be food waste. Again, the application is accompanied by an environmental statement. So, as on the reports, the report goes into detail in terms of the environmental statement, which has been produced, and assesses the potential impact of the proposed development, along with the mitigation measures proposed to avoid, reduce and, if possible, remedy any significant adverse impacts. So, before I go to the report, I'll just go through the presentation. So, the first slide there gives you some context as to the location of this application. In the bottom left-hand corner, the OS plan basically gives you an idea. So, to the, to the west and south of the application site is the A1, and the settlement just to the south is Colsterworth, and then to the north is Grantham. As I say, this site has been in operation for various activities for many years. And as you'll see in the report, it sets out the planning history, the background, and what's currently proposed and what's currently taking place on the site. The application related to the committee report today is the area that's outlined in red on the plan. Is it in red? So, yeah, so that sets out the scope of the application before the committee today. Next slide, please. This slide just gives a bit more sort of detail of what's actually on the site itself at the moment. Oh, no, sorry, not the site itself, but the adjoining land in terms of the facilities that are already there and currently under construction. Next slide, please. So, the next slides are a series of photographs just basically showing the context of the development in the surrounding landscape. So, the building that you can see on this photograph is not the application site, this is the storage facility that is adjoining the application site. But you can obviously see that this is a large feature in the landscape. And anyone that's sort of travelled down the High Diet Road would no doubt have seen this building, because it can be seen for many miles. But this is the storage building, this isn't part of the actual application for the committee today. Next slide, please. And then this is a bit more close-up of the storage facility. The application site is on the northern side of The application site is on the northern side of the, of this building. But I just wanted to put this photograph in just to give you a context of what's already on the site and so what the anaerobic digestion buildings and associated equipment would be, you know, what the backdrop would be to those, to those buildings. Next slide, please. And again, this is showing the context. So the application site is, as I'm looking at the screen, is on the right-hand side of those buildings. Again, just to give you a context of what's already on the site and how this development would sit against that backdrop of buildings. Next slide, please. So this just shows the access on to the High Dyke Road from Burton Lane. And you can see there the, how the existing configuration is of the local highway network. Next slide, please. There's a couple of photos of the actual application site itself. So that's its current state. And you can see the large warehouse of storage building in the background at the rear of the application site. Next slide, please. And again, just looking in the opposite direction. What you can just about pick up on the, on the side there is some screening. There's two basically levels of screening. There's some screening right adjacent to the application site, which is just picked up on this slide. And maybe we can go back a couple of slides to where the, again, this, you can just see there on the, on the photograph, there's a line of existing trees which provide a screen. And that, that screen continues to where the application site is. So there's two levels of existing screening, right adjacent to the application site and then this screen adjacent to the highway. We can move back to where the slides are, please. I think, yeah. And again, you'll see some reference in the report. This is from Burton Lane and the access and what's been put in place by the applicant for a sort of wider traffic management plan, involves six lanes and number plate recognition. There's more detail in the report as to how that would work. But obviously, the intention is that that would ensure that vehicles don't end up queuing on Burton Lane, that they can access the site and prevent any sort of congestion on the local highway network. Next slide, please. And then this is looking from Burton Lane back down towards the High Dyke. Okay, so just bringing you to the report itself. On page two hundred and fifty-five, this sets out at the bottom of the page some background to how this site has sort of been developed or been in operation for many years. You'll see that originally it was operated as an ironstone mine. And then in the nineteen seventies, it was taken over by a farming cooperative. And then nineteen eighty-two, McCain's set up a factory unit on the site. So it has been obviously subject to development for many years. And this is obviously a further extension of that. In twenty eighteen, South Castrated District Council gave planning permission for basically the, a lot of the warehouse that you've seen, which has now been largely constructed, and also various other operations. So obviously, quite a long planning history, which has involved a lot of development. And you'll see also that one of the main objectives of the anaerobic digestion unit is to produce energy or electricity, which will then be used by the other operations on the adjoining land. So, yeah, obviously, the applicant is looking at trying to provide its own source of energy or electricity to the facility and trying to do so in a renewable way. Then the, there's some quite detailed information about the application itself. I won't go through all that detail. I'm sure committees already had an opportunity to review the papers and to see what's proposed in terms of the size of the AD plant and the dimensions of the buildings, which is set out on page two hundred and fifty-eight. And then two hundred and fifty-nine at the bottom talks about the site access and some of the things I was saying around the number plate recognition to provide a better traffic management system for the site, for this application site and the wider activities that are taking place. As normal, the application is accompanied by some detailed reports. Again, picking up, as you see in the report there, around biodiversity net gain and further ecological reports, looking at the woodland and things like that. And then bottom of page two six two sets out, or starts to set out in detail, the environmental statement and all the relevant topics that have been included in the environmental statements. And then the report goes through each of those topics in some detail and sets out what the environmental statement has found in terms of the impact on the, on that relevant topic and how it's proposed to be mitigated. So again, I won't go through those in any detail. Then taking you through the report as normal, the relevant local plan and national planning policies are set out from page two seven five with the MPPF and then the relevant minerals and waste local plan policies and then the South Castrated and Co strategy policies. In terms of the results of consultation, top of page two hundred and eighty, you'll see that we've received an objection from Stoke Rochford and Eastern Parish Council. And moving on to the next page, two eight one, Colsterwood Parish Council have also raised sort of similar issues or support to Stoke Rochford and Eastern Parish Council in their concerns. Again, I won't go through those in detail. You've obviously been able to do that. And the conclusion and recommendation picks up those issues and how those are addressed. So other than that, you'll see that the, largely all the other consultees have been fairly satisfied with what's put forward. Just draw your attention on page two eight four to national highways, who have said that they've got no particular concerns, looked at the junction with the A1 and satisfied that that junction can accommodate the traffic movements. And on page two eight five, see halfway down, the council's highways and lead local flood authority has also looked in detail at the application and provided some quite detailed comments. But in conclusion, they are also satisfied, both from a highway capacity and flood risk and drainage perspective, that the application is acceptable. And then taking into the publicity, you'll see that whilst we have undertaken the publicity, there hasn't been a huge amount of responses. There's one representation which is set out on page ninety-five about the infrastructure in the A1. And again, paragraph ninety-six sets out some of the representations that have been received. And that goes on to page two eight nine, paragraph ninety-seven. Also on that page, paragraph ninety-eight, you'll see that South Castrated has no objection to the application, but does make some comments that have been taken into consideration regarding the cumulative impact of this development in conjunction with other operations that are ongoing and getting close to completion. So bring it all together. The conclusions start on page two eight nine and they go through the various relevant topics in some detail and picking up those various issues against the relevant planning policies and come to a conclusion for each topic as to whether the, that particular topic is in line with the planning policy or not. And then the recommendation on page two nine eight, as normal, it's split into two, whether it's environmental statement, but essentially that planning permission should be granted subject to the conditions set out in the report.
Thank you very much, Mr McBride. Quick canter through, but very detailed. We have a speaker to this application, Mr Cordery. Yes, you are here. Excellent. I think you know the protocol by now. Three minutes to address the committee when you're comfortable and you might get a question too afterwards. I'll emphasise the might, not will. So whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I wanted to take this opportunity to talk through the rationale and decision-making process in bringing forward these proposals. The proposals seek to develop on a brownfield designated employment site, which has a long history, industrial history spanning over seventy years. The proposals presented today, as well as the food production facility that was consented last year, intend to make this brownfield designated employment land as productive as possible. The consented food production facility will bring back jobs to the site, which were unfortunately lost when the McCain's factory closed in the last couple of years. And the proposals today will deliver a significant upgrade to supporting critical infrastructure to strengthen the existing and future operations on the site. As you are aware, the last couple of years has been extremely tough on many businesses due to increased cost of production, particularly in energy. Businesses within the food supply chain have not been immune to these issues. And this has unfortunately seen a number of companies close facilities that are not viable to operate. What we are seeking to do with these proposals is to invest in the long-term resilience of the operations of the site to ensure that it is a successful employment hub for decades to come. Secondly, it is estimated that thirty percent of the food produced for human consumption is lost or wasted somewhere along the food supply chain. Wasted takes place at all stages from farm to fork. And whilst we have made, we have and are making significant investments into the processing, handling and storage stages of the supply chain to reduce any losses, we unfortunately are not in control of actions of other areas of the supply chain, such as the retailers and consumers where wastage also occurs. These proposals seek to provide the opportunity for a more effective and sustainable way of handling food waste instead of it going to landfill where there is no benefit gained. Finally, as a group company of us, we are simply not just a developer, but an operator as well. As a result, we look to engage in the communities that we operate in. Following GXO's departure from the site in twenty twenty-two and our subsequent takeover of operations, we have been made aware of the historic issues with the entrance to the site. Importantly, as part of the works that have taken place with the other developments on site, significant investment has been made at the entrance, which significantly improves the capacity for checking and processing of vehicles. In addition, at the request of the parish council, we pragmatically engage with local and national highway authorities, who concluded that the junction around the site has sufficient capacity. We also seek to support the communities that we operate within and support local communities and initiatives, such as Grantham Disabled Children's Society, Grantham Rotary Club, Sumathon, West Grantham Primary Academy, Seven Helpings, Stamford Food Bank and Lincolnshire Women and Girls Cricket Club. In conclusion, I hope you see that proposals are a rational and important investment in sustainability to support the food supply chain and support the operations on site so that it can continue to be a provider of employment opportunities for generations to come. Thank you.
Dynamic, three seconds left. Any questions of the gentleman? Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your three minutes. That was really interesting. You may be aware, I am the division councillor, so I represent the area around where your development is. I'd like to just ask one specific question at this stage before moving on to more in-depth questioning. But you will be aware yourself, if you're familiar with the site, which I very much hope you are, that there are significant levels of flooding around the road network, around the site. How do you feel that these can be mitigated in any way? Or do you feel that sort of more is needed from yourself to do that? Because I understand it's only as a result of the increased development there that has caused these flooding issues. Thank you.
In relation specifically to the application first, and then I'll deal with wider issues. I think we're talking about the same things. Obviously, we've taken the necessarily flood risk assessments and drainage assessments and are, have proposed attenuation tanks beneath the service yard of this specific application. In relation to flooding around the existing roads, I am aware that that is an issue. And I know there was a particular case last year, I think. And we've rooted back to what the issue was. And we believe it was the road widening works that had taken place had created a blockage, which we subsequently have sought to resolve. So yes, we're dealing with this application, but we are aware and we do engage as pragmatically as we can with the local area. As I said, we, we're not sort of developers that develop the building and leave quickly. We are, we are operators. So we do, we do try to engage as possibly as possible with the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll allow you to retire. Thank you. Mr McBride, any comments? Okay, so I'll therefore open to committee. Who would like to start the debate or who would like to make a recommendation? Vice Chairman?
I'll stop. I'd like to stop the debate, if I may, Chairman, at this particular stage. You'll obviously hear from the questioning that I've just asked of the applicant that there are flooding issues around here. And I note that obviously, from what the applicant has said, that these modifications have been made. I'd like to ask Mr McBride what would happen if there were subsequent issues that arise as a result of this additional development within that area. I'd also like to ask about the proposed traffic road improvements that must be implemented prior to this and clarify whether that's before the start of the construction on this scheme. I would like to see a little more engagement with the actual local parish councils from the applicant, accepting that he said that they're trying to do that. But I think that we really need to engage and have the parish councils on board further. And it'd be wonderful, and I know the applicant's in the room, if perhaps there could be sort of regular meetings to perhaps discuss this. I know that the parish councils have concerns about this application. I would argue that the increase in HGVs from thirty-five to fifty-six is quite a large increase on the area. And I'd also ask whether it would be possible to have further improved signage and a condition to route all traffic via the A1, not just those HGVs that don't meet the height restriction. So, yeah, I will sort of await other members' comments before sort of deciding which way to go. But thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Mr McBride, a few questions there.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, councillor, for those questions. I'll try and answer them the best I can. I mean, in terms of the flooding issues, obviously, the development has been assessed on the basis that it will go ahead. And therefore, the mitigation and assessment is based on the fact that, you know, the development proceeds. So in that basis, it does take into account what the impact of this development would have on the, on any sort of flooding in the area. And the conclusion is from, from our, from our highways team, is Lead Local Flood Authority, that provided measures are put in place that, in terms of conditions, that, that that would be, you know, that would be satisfactory. And they don't feel that the development would cause unacceptable flooding issues.
Sorry, if I just interrupt you for one second, Mr McBride. I completely appreciate what you're saying. But what if those measures are not sufficient to prevent the issues that have previously occurred? That's where I'm trying to go. Do we have any recourse to come back and request further improvements after the application's been granted? Thank you.
We don't, but it might be that other agencies do. So if they became a problem, then, not that I'm that familiar with sort of things that can be done. You know, if there's a, an ongoing flooding issue, then I know, I'm aware that things can be maybe put in place to address that. That would be separate to the planning process. I mean, what we would need to make sure was that the issue or that the mitigation, that the conditions require are fully put, you know, are fully captured and done. And if that's the case, then as a planning authority, we wouldn't be able to take any action. Clearly, if they don't do what they're proposed, what they proposed to do and there were flooding events then, then obviously that would be a different scenario and we could take action. So the first thing we would check to make sure that they would, they comply with their conditions and do everything they're supposed to and put everything in place. And I know you asked quite a few questions. The second one that I can recall is regarding the highway improvements. And those are proposed to be done before the building is occupied, rather than before any development commences. So forgive me, was there other questions that you'd asked?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yeah. In terms of the signage and things like that, I mean, I guess, as we've seen on other applications today, there is a mechanism where we can request that, or put a condition on for a local community group, if that is something that the committee feel. If that is something that the committee feel is necessary, then obviously, there's a planning justification to do that, if that's something that the committee feel would be appropriate. Obviously, this development, or this application, involves the application before the committee today, but there's obviously other related developments on this site. So maybe it would be looking at widening the scope to make sure that it also perhaps captures those activities as well, rather than just focusing on just this particular development. But that's something that we could look into if the committee feel they want to add an additional condition to deal with that, in terms of setting up a liaison group. In terms of the signage and things like that, I would be reluctant to agree as to whether that can be done or not, because obviously, there's sort of restrictions about the signage that you can put on the highway, and whether that's acceptable or not. So I think that was something we would have to take away and look at. I wouldn't be able to commit to that as an additional condition without going away to check whether that was acceptable or not. So I think, was that anything else?
Just, if I may, Chairman, sorry, I'm monopolising this somewhat, but just to clarify that, obviously, we know that this site is going to be the subject of further applications. And I do think it's really important that the site engage with the community as a whole. And I would ask for members' support in perhaps conditioning a community liaison group to be set up for the future. It's not just one parish that's affected by this. We're all obviously familiar with the issues that we all face on the A1 as well, which does have a knock-on effect on the parishes, particularly with the additional traffic coming from the site. So I'd be very grateful for members' support on that. And thank you for answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that. No problem. I'm looking around to see if there's anybody else wishing to speak to the application, or indeed for a proposal in one direction or another. Councillor, Mrs Overton.
Thanks. I'd like to propose including the recommendation from the local member. Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a second for this? Councillor Skinner, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, so with that additional amendment from the local member, any comment you'd like to make, Mr McBride, before I put it to a vote?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we would look at the word as similar to what you've seen on other papers today in terms of the community liaison group. So it would be a similar sort of wording to that. So just to make you aware of exactly what it would say.
You happy?
Yeah, thank you.
Propose and second are happy? Okay, seeing nobody else wishing to speak, we have a proposal and a second with that additional amendment. All in favour, please show now. That is unanimous. I will say nobody against any abstentions. Seeing none, definitely carried. Okay, so that therefore brings us to, would you believe it? I believe the last application of the day. 7.1, A52 Main Road, Leverton, and a proposed on-call fire station amendment facility forwards. So, Mr McBride?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I've got to the bottom of my pile of papers, so we are on the last item. Yeah, so the application, plan permission is sought by the county council for a new single-story, two-bay on-call fire station with associated vehicle access, parking, drill areas and training tower at land off the A52 Main Road, Leverton. So we can go to the presentation. The first slide there just gives you a context as to where the location is. So it's in the settlement of Leverton, which is a linear settlement which strides the A52 to the north of Boston. The move to, obviously, the application site is shown there in the red area, so you can see where that is in proximity to other developments either side and opposite the application site. Next slide, please. So a little bit more detail as to the location of the site and the village of Leverton. You'll see referenced in the report to the fact that there's an existing fire station in the southern part of the village. So this application is to replace an existing fire station that fronts the A52 as well, but is around about, I think, a kilometre to the south-west of this application site. Next slide, please. Just an aerial photograph to give you an idea of where the application site is and the type of development that surrounds the application site and the landscape. Next slide, please. So a few photos here to show the site itself. So this is a photo taken at the southern end of the site, looking northwards. The site is on the left-hand side, and you'll see the, obviously, A52 in close proximity and a public footpath that runs between the highway and the proposed site. Next slide, please. So this is looking from the opposite side of the road, looking into the site. So you can see what the site is currently conditioned and with the hedge rows at the back and along the southern boundary. Next slide, please. This is taken at the other end of the site, the northern end of the site, looking back along the A52. So you can see what the highway network is in both directions, looking southwards and previously looking northwards. Next slide, please. And then just a few final slides, photos, just to show the site in a little bit closer context. Next one, please. And then the last two photos or slides, basically to show what the proposed fire station would look like. So at the northern end of the site, there is a proposed for access for vehicles which would use the car park, which you can just see shown on this slide. And then you can see the proposed design and style of the fire station from that slide. And then if you go to the next one. And then this is the, obviously, the opposite end with another access for fire vehicles to access the A52, which would be separate to the other vehicle access. And again, obviously, this is the part of the building which would house the fire appliances in that part of the building there. And I think one final photograph just shows the external lighting. There's some detail in the report about the external lighting, and that just shows a little bit about that. So bringing you back to the report. As normal, we set out on page 313 what the application's for and the buildings and layouts that would be part of the proposed development. Over to the next page, the site layout, the training tower, the appearance and detailed other materials. And you've seen those two slides, which show what the external appearance and the design of the building would look like. And moving on, as normal, we provide some more detailed information around lighting, transport and access, and other topics, flood risk and drainage, surface water drainage strategy. The normal sort of information that you would expect to accompany the application is set out in that first part of the report, and I won't go through any of those in detail. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review those, and you can see that hopefully, all the information that you would need to consider the application is included in that part of the report. And then page 324 sets out the site and surroundings, which we've already just been through. And then 325 at the bottom starts a list of relevant national planning policies and also the relevant policies from the South East Lincolnshire local plan. And then bottom of page 326 starts to set out the various consultancy responses that we've had through our consultation engagement. Again, I think they're there for you to view without me sort of going into any particular detail. I'll just draw your attention at the top of page 328, Leverton Parish Council's comments. Sets out some comments there around the fire station and looking at appropriate traffic enforcement and signage measures, which again, are picked up later in the report. And then at the end of the consultation section, you'll see that we have received comments that have been provided on page 331 by the local community. So we've had a petition signed by 121 local residents with some issues of concern, and also a total of 22 letters of individual objection that have been received. And they've addressed issues such as highway safety, location, drainage, flooding, impact on wildlife, noise impacts and visual impacts. And then you'll see below that that the Boston Borough Council have raised no objection, but made some comments about the flood risk assessment, but ultimately have conceded that they feel that, from looking at that overall, that they've got no objection to make. And then as normal, the report then goes into the conclusions section, which picks up all those sort of, all the relevant topics and addresses them in relying to what's been said and the relevant planning policies. And that's all brought together with the conclusion. And sorry, the recommendation at the bottom of page 338 is that the planning permission should be granted subject to the 22 conditions that are set out in the report.
Thank you, Mr McBride. Now, joining us online now, I think we've got Mrs Judith Welborn, who is an objector and wishes to address the committee. So we can afford you up to three minutes to address the committee, and there may be a question or two, I don't know, to follow. So whenever you are ready, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. May I speak about this application? Residents of Leverton are not opposed to a new fire station, just a proposed site. And obviously, we see in the petition and the objections, you can understand the depth of feeling in the village on the lack of communication about the process and the democratic process as upsetters. When the present fire station was built in 1939, there were very few properties in the area. Obviously, now there are many more, but a sighting of a fire station between two properties, the built-up area and a narrow stretch of the A52, between two blind bends at the side of a speed camera is, in our opinion, not ideal. Another, this is why we need zigzag lines and flashing lights to make people aware, as it will be obscured by north and south boundaries by hedges. We are concerned about the impact of the lights on the burdened population and residents at the site also, the lights at night. The concern of residents is also the drainage, as this is the site of a pit. And when they did those soil samples, they got, the bams got stuck and had to be towed off. So obviously, with the extra water and the rain, we're concerned about property on the south, as it will be lower than the site. Also, always a concern is the pedestrian crossing. Obviously, there'll be a south and north entrance and exit, just one pedestrian entrance in the middle. Footpath has been cleaned by LTC, therefore will encourage more people to access it and nearby amenities. It is used by the children from the nursery to go to the playing field. We are concerned that the safety when the works are in place, also the disturbance to the residents, as lot of were roundly. The lady in south here is 81. Hedges that brought her property were detonated by LTC many years ago to encourage wildlife. Also, when they wanted to build on their land, they were refused on the grounds they couldn't cross the footpath. I hope you can take this into consideration. I hope you'll look at our objections and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mrs Welborn? No? Okay, right, thank you very much. I will therefore move on to my next speaker. And forgive me, I'm not going to even attempt your surname, but I will call you Bill. So you're welcome to the meeting. You have three minutes to address the committee on behalf of fire and rescue. So the floor is yours when you're ready, Bill.
Chair, councillors and members of the planning committee, thank you for your time today. I am a station manager working in the operational support department of Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue, and I'm here to present the operational case for the construction of the proposed replacement fire station in Leverton. The current Leverton fire station has served the community for many years, providing a local response to Leverton, the surrounding villages, many include a number of isolated rural properties and farms, and to the busy A52, a key transport route with a high volume of traffic. However, it's no longer fit for purpose. The site is small, inefficient, outdated and falls behind the standard of facilities at all other fire stations across the county. This impacts not only the working conditions for firefighters, but also the effectiveness of emergency response in the local area. One of the most pressing issues is the station's limited space, which creates several operational challenges. The current site does not provide adequate room for training, welfare facilities or essential decontamination of fire kit. Currently, firefighters frequently must travel to stations in Boston or Skegness to undertake vital training, which reduces their availability and response efficiency. By modernising the station, we can ensure that training is carried out locally, improving readiness and resilience. Another major concern is the layout of the existing site. Fire appliances currently have to reverse off the busy A52 into the station's appliance bay. This manoeuvre not only causes disruption to traffic, but also presents a safety risk for both firefighters and road users. A new station with improved access would eliminate this issue, ensuring a safer and more efficient response when crews are called to emergencies. Additionally, parking for responding vehicles is extremely limited. Our firefighters respond from home or work when called out, and the lack of dedicated parking makes mobilisation more difficult. A modern station with adequate parking and better access would enable a faster turnout, ensuring our crews reach incidents as quickly as possible. It's important that any new fire station is situated within enough space to allow the layout of modern facilities. But it must also be at the centre of the community from which it draws its personnel. On-call firefighters, who make themselves available around the clock, must be able to urgently attend the station within minutes when the emergency call is made. The proposed site, which provides the space for modern facilities and effectively addresses the movement of vehicles, drainage, and delivers ecological benefits such as tree planting, native hedgerow, wild plants and grassland, also maintains a presence on the A52 and within the boundary of the village, allowing recruitment within a radius encompassing the largest possible bulk of the community. The aim of the proposed development is to provide the community of Leverton with a much better facility that will improve response times, save lives, protect property and continue to support the resilience of the service.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions of the fire officer? Okay, thank you for... To committee and Councillor Skinner, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm the member for this area, and I'll apologise for getting highways to clear the paths up recently as well. It's been a long-term project, that has. The crew of Leverton, obviously part-time. They're a very dedicated lot. Helped quite a lot out with Wayne Fleet and had three sets of kit with no drying facilities. Not a nice thought putting wet or contaminated kit on. They deserve a station with the proper facilities. As described, built in 1939, it no longer is fit for purpose whatsoever. I'd reserve my position on this, and reading through the work that's been done, including contaminated land, contaminated land, it doesn't seem to be that there is anything contaminated. Highways have assessed the route for coming out. It would be good that, as with other main road situations, maybe warning lights to give people a clue things come out. But there's normally a big blue thing on the top of the trucks that lets people know when they're coming out anyway. So I will be supporting this. I will say, when the evenings were held at the fire station, I did go down in support. And at that stage, I hadn't an idea where the station was going to be constructed. So I went down with no preconceived ideas, but this makes a big difference for the community. I believe within the report, all of the questions have been asked and I'm quite happy to move it, Chair.
Very much so. I'll go to councillor Pepper next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Over the years, I've had the pleasure of visiting all the 38 fire stations in Lincolnshire. I last visited Leverton nine or 10 years ago, and then it was by far the worst, in the worst condition out of all the stations. Very, very poor. I can recall the driveway leading up to the appliance room door, it was either flat or sloping in the wrong direction. So there's water ingress flowing into the station. The conditions there were very cramped for lectures and things like that. And built almost 90 years ago, it's clearly no longer fit for purpose. I can see why the public would object to a fire station, but in reality, it's only a mander small amount of time. And I think over the years, I've seen lots of objections from the public regarding fire stations, but their perception of it is not in real terms what it's actually going to be like for an on-call fire station. I think they think of something bigger and busier than what it actually is. And regarding the noise, I mean, the personnel are only there a couple of hours or so a week, training evenings, most of that time they're inside. And things like sirens and things, I mean, the personnel, as far as I'm aware, they're instructed not to use their sirens in close vicinity to the local population there unless absolutely necessary. And similar to my colleague here, I can't think of a better location, quite honestly, close to the population, but also on the edge of the village. And I mean, my colleague here's moved the recommendation, I'd be happy to second it, Chairman.
Okay, I'll therefore move on to councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, as is the oft-tue phrase in the committee, I know this area very well. I'm the vice-chairman of the adjacent parish council, I'm the chairman of the parish council a couple of villages away. And I can say without a shadow of a doubt, my family having relied on the services of the fire service at Leverton over the years, I can say as a local resident and with that familiarity with the area, we are so incredibly lucky in our part of the world to have this service here, this facility here, the fire service based in Leverton. It means that crews are able to attend so many local residents so much quicker than if they're having to come out from Boston or from further afield. And I'm actually going to say I'm deeply disappointed, indeed saddened, to read here that there is a petition with 121 signatures against this facility. I think this is a sign of the country that we have become, that we have 121 people signing a petition against a fire station. I would have been much happier, I think we would have all genuinely rejoiced if there was a petition, or 121 local people calling for a better fire station for those crews to work out of, for modern facilities for those crews on whom those 121 people, I hope they never rely on this fire service from Leverton to come to their aid, but I would have liked to have thought that those people, knowing that that is a hypothetical possibility, would be supporting these facilities, getting the best facilities they possibly can for the fire service in Leverton. We've heard, I think very clearly, that the existing station is too small, too cramped, too old-fashioned, it doesn't have modern facilities. This is an opportunity to keep it relatively close to the current location. There are only eight properties that either are either one side or the other, looking on my Google Earth, that would have any reason whatsoever to object or complain. So I don't know where 121 comes from, I really don't even know where the 22 objectors come from, given the relatively small number of properties that are directly anywhere near. And the distances, the spatial distances between this application and the buildings on this application, those properties, are well within what is acceptable. I don't accept that this is a particularly dangerous stretch of road. It's adjacent to a very popular speed camera. I think most people that live anywhere in the vicinity and drive their car have probably been caught at some point in the last 20 years. But it is one of those, it is a speed camera that is incredibly well-known. There are the bends coming up. It is a part of the A52, perhaps the part of the A52, where most people drive like nuns. So getting in and out, I don't see is going to be a massive, I don't see this being a massive road safety hazard. And as for the bats, I mean, I'm more concerned about making sure that there is a facility here that local people can be properly proud of, and I'm very happy to support it, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything there for Mr McBride. I'll move on to councillor Ashley Morris, next, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I mean, I'm simply echoing what my colleagues have said. I think people in that vicinity need to be amazingly grateful that in the unlikely event their house catches fire, something hasn't got to come struggling out of Boston, which with all the will in the world, if a steel train's going through, jolly good luck, your house is going to be ashes. And having a facility out in sort of what's basically a rural area is a major plus. And with all the will in the world to, I'm sure, the very worthy people who signed the petition and councillor Welborn, who obviously echoed their views, it's the same complaints every time. It's noise, it's this, it's that. And just on a very minor point, if there is a flood, it's quite handy to have the fire brigade somewhere useful. I would totally support this. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. I will be brief. As has already been said, it is a very, now, it's served its time, it's a very antiquated facility. I am very fortunate and very proud to have a fire station in my own division, and I am always asked the same question by firefighters in my division, which is, when can we have a new one, councillor Smith? So I always go with the begging bowl and try and get them one, but as yet I am unsuccessful, unfortunately, for the very similar reasons of, it isn't quite as old as Leverton, but it has similar issues. There is nowhere for decontaminated kit, there is no, basically there's insufficient space for them to function internally and do what they need to do. As has been said by colleagues, I cannot imagine, A, potentially how dangerous it is to put contaminated kit on, and B, how unpleasant it is to put wet, potentially contaminated kit on after you have struggled for however many hours dealing with the fire and then go out and do it again, Chairman. Again, as has been said, the local population are exceedingly fortunate to have that facility. I know, I am thankful every time I go past that fire station, knowing it's encased in my division, should my residents need it. And I am more than happy to support the recommendation, Chairman. It's been a long time coming, it's been worked for a very long time and gladly it's finally here so that the fire service members can actually have the facilities they deserve to work out of.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything there for you, Mr McBride. Right, I think we've run out of speakers for now. It is proposed by councillor Skinner, seconded by councillor Pepper, that the recommendation as printed is accepted. All in favour, please show. That is unanimous. Anybody against any abstentions, seeing none, that is clearly carried. Okay, well, believe it or not, folks, we've got to the end of the agenda. Thank you all for your debating during the course of the meeting, it's been an interesting meeting. All I can do is close the meeting now and wish you all a safe journey home. So see you next month.